Sweet, 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 sweet.
Good afternoon and welcome to the, excuse me, good afternoon and welcome to the Monday, welc- and welcome to Monday, October 7th, 2024 Board of Commissioners Workshop. I would ask you to place all electronic devices on silent as we begin our meeting. I'd at this time ask Commissioner Flowers-Taylor to deliver the invocation and Commissioner Johnson to lead us in the Pledge of the Flag.
If you would join me in a moment of silence before prayer. Father, we come to you this afternoon in so much thanksgiving. Thanksgiving for our community being spared from Helene as she tore through most of the eastern seaboard this past week. We ask you to be with those families, those who are missing loved ones, those who are missing homes. We know only too well in this community what that looks like and my heart goes out for the chaos. We ask you to put your arms and angels around this community to help them to survive. We ask you also to be in this room today, help us to discern what your will is for this community and how we can make the best decisions for our citizens. Ask us to be open-minded and tolerant of all ideas that are put on the table today. And these things we ask in your precious Son's name, Jesus, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B, Agenda Items, Personnel Policy Discussion. At this time, I would like, we'd like to have a chance to hear from Miles Neville, our HR Director, regarding Personnel Policy Manual Update. Remember, this is the second time for the update. The Board asked Mr. Neville and our County Manager to share the cost impact for the changes to the Personnel Manual, specifically regarding the changes to adding vacation days. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Glad to be back. When we left it the last time, we had gone through the personnel ordinance and everybody seemed pleased with what we had done. We've actually cut it down from about 150 pages to 70 something, to 80 pages. But the thing y'all left me with was discussion, another discussion about the vacation or annual leave accruals. So some numbers have been run. I'm gonna let Dr. Ledbetter tell you about those numbers because he understands them much better than me.
Thank you, Miles.
Yes, sir.
We actually went through the entire list of employees for their hire dates, the amount of money that, that each of our employees make, and ran the numbers specifically for adding additional vacation days to the employees. The, please forgive me, I'm gonna try my best to find the exact, no, for us.
Pleasure.
There were five, I don't have it readily in front of me and I apologize for that. The jail, the Corrections Institute, nine-one-one, and fire department and the road deputies were the ones that were most impacted. They would be required to have a replacement should they take vacation leave. And using just those individuals as the key points, we were able to derive a cost for the county at $71,441 for adding the additional vacation days to our personnel policy. We went through the numbers a number of times, went through them today, and the numbers do add out for the impact to the budget, $71,441.
And how many employees did you say this was affecting?
This would impact 538 employees total. The ones that it would impact the most would be those new employees at zero to four years. It would increase the number of vacation days to be not at the top, not at the bottom, but right in the middle for what our jurisdictions around us are offering as a benefit for coming onboard. And Miles actually has that information for us.
Yes. Currently, we're at the bottom in accruals. I don't want to be at the top. I don't even want to be right next to the top. I just want to not be at the bottom and not, when people ask us what our vacations are, I don't like saying this is what they are. As an example, we currently offer the first year six days of vacation accruals. That's at the bottom, actually with Fayette County, with Coweta County, and with Troop County. The difference is, the second year, they shoot up to 10 to 12 days. So they shoot up very quickly and we don't. We go up to nine days, up until the end of your fourth year. So what I'm just trying to do is just get us closer to where they are so that I can be a little more competitive and be proud to say that this is the one thing that I think we're lacking and not have to say that anymore. But you are the bosses and I will go out and do whatever you tell me to do.
Did y'all see the paper?
I, I still never saw the paper.
The policy?
Yeah. I sent you an email saying that there was no attachment on there.
And Miles sent it to you very shortly, right after that, as an email.
Well, I, I sent that to you and Erica. I did not send it to-
Oh, I apologize. I thought you sent it to Ms. Quinn as well. Please forgive me, Ms. Quinn. I'll make sure you get a copy of it.
And that's why we look at an issue like deer in a headlights.
I am so sorry.
Ms. Quinn and I just talked this morning. I didn't send it to her because I don't want to send one thing to one person and not everybody.
Please forgive me, I will make sure you get another copy of it, but-
Yeah, because I just wanted to, you know, see, okay, now from zero to four, we're here and then this is what the, the recommendation is moved or-
Well, this will basically put us in line with the City of Griffin. Still not at the very, very top, but much better. And for, as an example, what I'm proposing is from zero to the end of your fifth year, 10 days a year. Whereas right now, we're at six. We go up to nine, we go up to 12, and then we're 12. So I'm just trying to get us up to 10 days a little bit quicker.
So beside, aside from that one, the other areas, how much of, of a bump are they gonna get in terms of accrue, accrual? Were their accrual numbers changed from four to eight or from five to nine, whatever?
Really, I think the, the biggest change you'll see, and it's not much of a change as right now, 15 plus is, or 16 plus is 18 days, meaning 16 plus years, rest of your career. I would take it to 20 days. So I would add two days.
Is that like, does that come out to something e- even? I mean, a week is like seven, we don't pay for seven days at a time, do we?
For a 40-hour employee, a week is five days. So once you've- So once you've finished your 16th year, then you would get accrued four years, four weeks a year.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to do the math so bad. See, I don't, I don't know if four weeks is like seven days is a week or a week is five days.
A week is five days.
Five days. We actually look at it-
Twenty would be four weeks. Five days a week.
Okay, and when you get to 20, 18 years, it will go from 16 to?
It'll still be 20. It'll be from, when you finish your 15th year, it goes to 20 and stays at 20 forever.
Okay.
I'm not proposing we do what Henry County does and goes to 30 or Coweta, maybe I shouldn't be talking about that in a public meeting. Maybe that's a bad thing.
No, I just-
I'm not proposing 24 like some places. I'm happy with 20.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not challenging you on it.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just that I'm very visual and that's why I called you, because I needed the paper to be able to read.
And when, if you're new, if you're a brand-new hire, okay, let me back there. Okay, so how many days for, like, for the first year? I know you said zero to-
Six days.
Six days.
We accrue it in monthly increments, so it would be, right now, you accrue four hours a month.
And with the change, it would be how much a month?
6.7 hours a month.
And you say that's in the middle?
It's above the, it's really kind of weird because we've got us at the bottom with a couple of others who then blow past us pretty quickly, and then you got those at the top. We'll still be in the middle with the middle bunch, we'll just be closer to them.
Okay.
To where they are, because after that first year, they typically go shoot way up above us. And I'm just trying to get us close to where they are there.
And maybe I'm thinking a little bit more corporate here, too. And I think, and I'm not challenging them like you, we need to be up to par. But I'm thinking if you're a newer employee coming in, I, you know, I think we'd like to kind of prove ourselves first to see, you know, if this is gonna work, whether or not I believe you should get, because, you know, the person may not be around that long, you know? So I mean, if they're here four or five weeks or months or whatever like that, would they, I don't know. I mean, it builds in a lot of vacation time for them if it's not working out.
I get it. If, it's something, I get what you're saying. If you've got a carrot in front of you, that looks pretty good, but when you get your first paycheck, or your first, finish your first month and you get that check and it shows you have earned four hours on your check, it just doesn't feel good.
I get it.
You know? And that's something that people have said over the years, new employees, you know, have said, this is all and, yeah, but we got, and I don't focus on that. I focus on other stuff. I focus on the holidays because we have as many or more than most. So I try to get them off that subject and get them on the other stuff.
I just, I just appreciate the building up for your tenure to employees as opposed to starting someone off. I get how we have to do it, but I think, you know, new employees need to have something to look forward to. If they prove and do their job and do it well, this is what you have to look forward to, rather than necessarily coming in, you know, and it not working out, but I agree.
Now, remember, it's accrued on a paycheck. So you've got to work your entire first year before you get two weeks of vacation.
And that's what I need to hear.
So it takes a while for a new employee to build up.
That's what I need to hear. I thought at the beginning of the year, you get your, okay.
You accrue monthly, so after two months, you have eight hours. You can take that eight hours or you can keep it to the end of the year and end up with 48 hours that you would accrue right now. So it's not, we don't give it to them and put it in a bank upfront. They earn it as they go.
Got it. I got it.
Okay, now, three of you are business owners who have people who work for you and your hours, so you should be able to be a pretty good look at how's this measure up?
Well, that's why I was asking the questions I asked.
Yep, yep. So, all right, we're gonna vote on this-
Yeah, it's fine, now that I understand.
Today, tonight at 6 o'clock, so if there's questions, this is the time.
Okay.
And I think Steve's probably sent it to you, Gwen, so that you can take a look between the meetings.
All right, thank you.
All right, anything else on this?
Can I bring up the other HR, since we've got ahead of it?
Yep.
Clay and I, I think we already talked about this. So I'm not sure which year it was, when we went to self-
Insured?
Insured. And we, we put aside a quarter million dollars for people, and when we, it was gonna go up a zillion dollars, but we could bring that back down if we raised the deductible from 1,500 to 4,000. Everyone remember this? And then it was like, well, people can't afford the 4,000, so let's put aside-
We did the million there.
Yeah, 250,000, and then we can fill that gap personally, and then, but that would save us like 600-something thousand. We voted on doing that. That happened, but apparently it only happened that one year. You know, it-
Now, is, was that also before we changed insurance companies?
I think it was right at the same time.
I think it was when we were self-insured, wasn't it?
We just became self-insured this past year. We were partially self-insured the year before.
That was when it was partially.
Year before that, we were fully insured.
So to my recollection, and I might have missed a meeting, we never did away with this program. We never did away with the, I remember them coming back and saying, hey, man, we only used a very small amount of it. And we said, yeah, let's keep it going next year, let's just roll it over. I remember that. And then we haven't spoken about it. And I, I didn't do anything with it until my son was very badly burned last October, so we had to go to the hospital and stay over the night. And I realized when my bill came due that I owed thousands and thousands of dollars and I went and said, okay, that's, you know, but I'm gonna get reimbursed above the 1,500. And that isn't there, it hasn't been there, and I don't know why it stopped.
Not budgeted.
Who directed it to stop. We certainly voted for it to be there and it wasn't there. So my deductible is $6,900.
That's crazy.
And, you know, I mean, I'm, I have my own law practice and my wife has her own accounting practice, so like, that's not something that's gonna break our bank. I mean, it's, it totally redid our finances for the year, but, you know, our employees aren't lawyers and accountant, you know what I'm saying, some of them. But at the same time, you know, that $6,900 is a ton of money. And we, you know, I, we did, we did not end to that program. So I, I'm not sure what happened to it, who, who decided that we did need to vote to change that.
Now, is that an HR thing or is that a budget thing? Because I'm thinking-
I think it was because it was decided when we got our insurance, when we decided, that's when we initially decided.
And they came back and reported it and we said, yeah, let's keep it going. And that's the last I ever heard of it, and I, I guess-
But I can't remember if it was with somebody.
Like a lot of all, I just assumed it kept going.
Well, the key thing with it now is next year, when we bring on the next insurance- Must, must. To make sure that we're in that, we have that in there, or we don't have it in there, and we make sure people know about it.
But, but, so you're saying we don't have it in there now?
It's not there now.
It, it's not in there this year, nor was it in last year, because I paid both years.
Yep.
A lot.
And I walked in there with, with my balance and said, hey, we had to cut this check. We, you know, we started this program, I want reimbursement, and they went, what are you talking about? And I said, what do you mean, what I'm talking about? We voted to put this, you know, explain the whole thing, and they were like, we don't even, we don't know anything what you're talking about. Like, it was, so we thought this was hap, my issue was, we thought this was happening and had been happening for years and it had not been. So like, we need to make that correction. That's, but also look forward in the future to making sure that things that we think are happening are happening and things that we think are not happening are not happening.
So, so that's, that's like, okay, they bring us the insurance in here and we look at it and it looks good. Like, right now, I can't tell you off the top of my head what the deductible is, if it's 2,500 or, or what it is.
It's a sliding scale. Once you hit a certain amount, then they pay like 80, 20, but then that caps out at a out-of-pocket amount of 6,900 for a family.
So, but what I'm, I'm getting at is I feel like as a board, we made a decision to set aside this money.
Yep.
So I don't, I can't remember how long you've been here, Steve, but clearly you weren't here when, when that happened. But then, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, how will that affect our insurance if we still do that?
I don't think we- We did it to be able to raise the deductible, which saved us a ton in like direct costs.
For premiums.
And then we set a small amount of what that was gonna save us aside to then reimburse. And then I think for the first year we did it, we didn't get close to the 250, so I mean, it saved us well over a half million dollars. It was a great idea and then it just went away. And we never voted for it to go away and I'm not saying that money was misappropriated or something.
Is this something that we can do on our own or is this, does it have to be in conjunction with our carrier?
I think we-
Because I felt like it had nothing to do with the carrier.
That's right. It was just us, yeah. We were, we were just sitting on it.
I was not here when you passed the new budget, but our deductible is $1,500. Before, it was 4,500, but we would reimburse you the difference on the back end. That's what you're talking about.
Right.
That's where that pool of money either was or was not budgeted.
Yeah.
But when we went fully self-insured, of course, I wasn't here, but I know now, having come back and looked at the plan, it's $1,500 per person. It's not the 45 with the reimbursement on the back end. So if someone's overpaying or they think they're overpaying, I need their bills so that I can send them to Cigna, because I think that's what it is. I think it's an, somebody's over, people are overpaying and, and I want to fix that problem.
Y'all, y'all gonna drive me to drinking. I, I brought my bill in this year and I said, here it is. And they said, here is how your plan works. It's 80, 20 up to 6,900, which means, whereas it's 100% up to 1,500, it's 80, 20 above that. And I, I get that there's a split and whatever, but what that means is my out-of-pocket is above and beyond my premiums is 6,900. It's not 1,500. It's 100% out of 1,500.
Your out-of-pocket maximum may be 6,900, but that's after the deductible, then you're paying 20%. And if it's a big 15 or 20,000 dollar bill, 20% of that's gonna be a few thousand dollars and you can jump up to 6,900 very quickly.
So you're saying with his plans?
I haven't seen his bill. I don't know, and I don't want to talk about it in a public forum.
I'll get it.
Personally.
Right.
You might have brought it, Commissioner Dunn, I haven't seen it.
But you, you didn't. I just, well, this is-
Well, yeah, but I'm saying, we don't have all the documentation we need because clearly-
We gotta figure out-
The lines of figuring out how we got from where we started to here and something different happened.
Well, it, it happened differently because as a fully, fully insured entity, we're paying it all anyways. After that 1,500, we're paying it all except the 20% copay that the employee pays, so we're doing it anyways.
I mean, you can call it a copay if you want.
So we're setting aside six or seven million dollars, whatever that number is, to pay for everything.
Once again, take your documents to Neville.
I'm not saying you're doing something wrong.
No, sorry. But I want to do something-
What year did this happen again?
But I want to do something right.
The final bills were all this year.
Okay, so it's still, you know, I would think there's-
It's still not there. I'm in the same boat.
He had a, he had a bigger bill than him.
Last year was 15 grand for me, this year was 6,900 for me, so I, I-
And that's his personal out-of-pocket.
I can sympathize very much with Commissioner Dunn.
Okay, let's take that, get that back in, get the HR to come back and talk to us about where we are and then to make sure that next time we have medical come forward-
Since you were here, I figured-
I'll make sure we bring somebody from our, our broker. He'll talk about it. They're much better at it than I am.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Miles.
Item number two, presentation of a draft joint Spalding County Water Authority, Spalding County MOU for Public Infrastructure Planning. Spalding County Water Authority General Manager, Joseph Johnson. During the last six months, a joint committee comprised of Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor and the County Manager and members of the Development Authority and the Water Authority met to consider a memorandum of understanding for public infrastructure within Spalding County. This afternoon, the General Manager of the Spalding County Water Authority Facility, Water, Spalding County Water and Sewerage Facility Authority will present the committee's draft MOU for us to consider.
Good afternoon. So the last six months-
Good afternoon, General Manager.
So the last six months, we've been working over the course of three workshops with really one main objective, and that was to clearly delineate the respective responsibilities and duties of the county and the authority regarding public infrastructure planning, permitting, implementation, operation, management, and ownership. The delineation of these responsibilities is crucial into achieving the shared goals that we have of managing and promoting strategic economic growth, ensuring sustainable and efficient utility administration and management, upholding environmental stewardship, and protecting public health. As a spokesperson for the steering committee, we feel the draft MOU that is before you embodies the shared goals and reinforces the partnership between the county and the authority regarding public infrastructure planning. This partnership aims to foster economic growth through the development of both water and wastewater systems. So what you have here is basically a summary of eight different buckets that this MOU kind of falls in. So the first bucket is gonna be purpose and scope, and if you look beside the paragraph, you'll see in brackets, a, a number scheme. That is the paragraph it respond, or corresponds to in the actual draft document. So the first bucket's purpose and scope. The second is roles and responsibilities. The third is trustee and permitting. Four is code of ordinances. Five is temporary solutions. Six, strategic planning. Seven, development discussions. And then eight, financial policy, financial and policy implication, implications. So I don't know if you want to go line by line or if you have any specific questions. Basically, what this does is it just solidifies the partnership between both the county and the authority, and it ensures that we work together to spur economic development that is both beneficial to the county and beneficial to the authorities with, with its objectives and initiatives.
Okay. All right, we, does everybody glance through the MOU? Okay.
Can you open it up on the, I can't get it to open up on my agenda.
You're on the committee, weren't you?
I know, I still like to see.
And I want to reemphasize, this is in draft form. We're asking for comments, suggestions that we can take back and work through as a committee, if you have any.
I read through this pretty well, at least I think I did. Talk to me about the bond portion of it. It appears to me that the Water Authority wants to get into our ability to do things with bonds.
So we all agreed when, when we went down this road for the ARPA funds, we received 3.1 million dollars to specifically target industrial development, industrial and commercial growth along the AKB corridor. So the bonding component comes, if we need to get bonding, we are not gonna be able to bond based on revenue bonds for the sewer system, because the sewer system is not gonna be self-sustaining day one. So we would come to the Board of Commissioners to back and co-sign revenue bonds with the Water Authority. So this was kind of our way of saying, hey, there's multiple ways to pay for this. There could be a milled discussion, there could be cash, there could be bonds. It's kind of, if the county goes through and say that they go and they, they bond a hundred million dollar project, if we are trying to support growth and grow a sewer system and we, and you go after a bond and then it, it, it doesn't allow us to get funding, that's kind of competing interests. So all it does is ensures that we're, we're in constant communication with one another.
So, Mr. Chairman, when I, when I read this, I was able to, to clearly initially look at the language that talks about, talks about the bonding. And as a county commissioner, I totally understand, and we, we say this every single time that we're up here, that we need, in order to make this economic development and economic growth happen, we have to have sewer. We know that we don't have the capacity to do sewer here, those of us sitting on this dais. So the rub for me on the other side is that the water, the city doesn't make money off sewer. Nobody makes money off sewer. It is a necessary service, nobody makes money off of it. And it would be crazy for the Water Authority to go all the way out on the limb to try and provide the base that we need to get commercial and industrial here and not have a partner at the table, because they're not gonna benefit from, if you've got a million square foot building, they're not really gonna use that much water because it's somewhere, so they're not gonna really make money off water. They're not gonna make money off the toilet being flushed, but we will make property taxes. So- So, I personally didn't have a problem with them asking us to, asking the Board of Commissioners to sign bonds for projects that we think will do economic development. You know, in good business, you don't throw away your money in an investment. And I would never agree for the Water Authority, as a member, to go out on this limb and take responsibility for all the cost it's going to take to secure sewer and sewer expansion on Arthur K. Bolton. So, some of the, some of the language on here was a little bit pungent, and I think that we look back, because you know, as a Board of Commissioners, we don't want anybody telling us what to do. And I think the big ask on this paper is, are we willing as a board to partner with the Water Authority to make sure that they do what they say that they're going to do in terms of providing sewer, so that we can finish developing Arthur K. Bolton?
Is it Arthur K. Bolton that way?
Yeah, Arthur K. Bolton. So.
Are we allowed to enter an agreement that puts a barrier between us and bonds? Like, I mean, are we allowed to do that? Like?
You do it now.
You do.
What, which organizations get to veto our funds?
The airport authority is one. The airport authority is one.
So if we bonded anything, the airport authority would have to vote to allow us to do that?
Well, the airport authority came to you and asked you to co-sign for the bond for the airport, for the initial money that was expended for property.
The initial seven million.
That's not what I'm asking. Is there any organization right now that we would have to ask their permission, other than the voters, to bond something?
No, no, you have the bonding authority.
So, wouldn't, just listening to what Gwen just said, wouldn't this give the Water Authority the power to say that we couldn't issue a bond if we wanted it?
No.
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 Yeah, they can't tell us anything. Water Authority can't tell the Board of Commissioners anything.
All right. Then I misheard. That's what I thought, I was like, wait a minute, I don't know if we can do that.
The Water Authority actually has bonding authority, so they could go bond. The challenge with that is, they don't have the credit to bond up at the amount that they would need to install sewer on AKB, because there's no revenue stream that would actually fund that bonding requirement. So they are asking that you, as a Board of Commissioner, is actually partner with them to secure bonding for the establishment of sewer along AKB, because we will receive property tax on the development that goes on AKB, where they would not. The only revenue source that they would receive would be for water, and as we just discussed, sewer is at best net neutral. At best.
If I could interject, we're not asking right now for any bonding along AKB. This is just the framework that would allow for that. We're currently working out financing and funding mechanisms internally.
Good.
I'm always cautious when it comes to AKB and expanding light water and sewer capacity out that way, that that's our employment corridor. So not a residential corridor. So all of this needs to be specifically created for future industry and commercial, much like the Butts County Authority has done there. Like, they're not allowed to hook up any houses to their, you know, the new constructions they've got there at seventy-five. So, I think, we've talked about this before, and there, there's a way that we can still include the people that are currently there, but like, you know, it's, this is specifically done for, you know, commercial industrial growth, for employment in our employment corridor, not so people can build apartment complexes, or, you know, subdivisions or anything like that.
And that's totally dependent upon you, because the Water Authority can't make those decisions as to what goes where. That's dependent upon what you allow.
So we decide, we decide what development goes, but I challenge all of you, because specifically, the front side of High Falls Road and McDonough Road is on the backside of AKB. There is nothing that separates them, except for whatever the property lines are. That entire street is residential. If someone wants to build apartment, an apartment complex on the backside, on that street, on High Falls, or on the other side, we don't have a right to tell the Water Authority what they can do with that sewer. If what they're providing for us in our AKB overlay, which, not really sure how wide that is, but any property that touches it, the whole property's on there. So as far as, I agree with you, I don't think that in the AKB corridor, there should be any housing. I do feel that at some point, we need workforce housing in the industrial area. But I just, as I said, we have to keep remembering that on the backside of our overlay, and maybe even on the other side, on the south side, there are AR-1 and R-1, 2, and 3 residences that are on the backside of that. So the good thing is that, even if somebody wanted to do something, as a board, they would still have to come to us for zoning to be able to do it. But I think what the Water Authority needs to know is that when we decide to make those decisions, will we be able to provide the water they need? Will they need sewer? Do you want them to be on septic? Which, as a partner, we hope that you would encourage, discourage people from getting septic tanks, just because of the health issues surrounding them. But, yeah, I just feel like, this is a lot. I'm very proud of the Water Authority for stepping up and seeing that what we say we need, it's possible for them to be able to do that. But, you know, we did that with the Development Authority.
Can I ask a question? And I, you know, I'm just kind of, and I don't know, this is probably not an answer or solution, but I just want to ask it, because I know I see here, at the end here, we're talking about future splosts, and T-splosts, and things like that. And I know that we, most of our splosts projects have to be toward capital projects and specific things like that, funding. Is there a way, I'm wondering, if we could dedicate monies for future projects on a splost that would go toward sewer for the Water Authority? Can we do anything like that?
You can do anything.
But since we're talking about future splosts, are we, we're going to be talking about that in the future?
Yeah, we're going to talk about that.
I'm just thinking that would be a way of kind of.
I mean, Steve's capstone project clearly shows the difference in what we're getting in taxes on AKB now, and what we could be getting in taxes on AKB. We don't have the ability. We don't even have a clue about how to put sewer out there. But we have someone who is willing to work with us to make that happen. It's not, I just don't feel like it's our place to say, okay, y'all just need to take a loss on this, but we're going to get the tax money on the backside. It, I mean, part of, I think, what they're planning to do is that, as they get developers to maybe ask the developer to do their own portion of the sewer, to help them offset costs. But at the end of the day, if they had to complete it, if they need eighty million dollars, we're doing it there. And I'm saying, we, the Water Authority, is doing what they're doing on AKB, because we need to increase economic development, to reduce property taxes.
My feedback on section eight is, the last two sentences, I'd just like to make sure that we work those. I know that the attorneys have worked those pretty hard, but.
And not just the attorneys, the committee members have worked those, that entire paragraph.
I know that, it's just uncomfortable. When I read through it the first time, I was uncomfortable on what authority you all had to our bonding issue. So that's, it may be exactly right, the attorneys may agree and say, Clay, what you want is in there, that's just the one that bothers me.
So if I could add any language, remember, this document is just the framework for partnership, right? So the intent of paragraph eight can be summarized as, you know, if the Water and Sewer Authority is responsible for water and sewer in unincorporated Spalding County, it is our duty to come to the Board of Commissioners in the event that we needed to take on debt, and show our business plan, right? So if, if we can't sell it to you guys, then we haven't sold it to ourselves either. So, this language is just put there as a way of saying, hey, this is going to ensure that, you know what, we're going to hold hands, and we're going to be lockstep with one another, where, I know there were some thoughts that the Water Authority could go out and become the animal in the room. We can't do that. Y'all have the power, we just support through our initiatives with the water and sewer infrastructure.
So, if the Water Authority decided they wanted to go out sixteen west and put sewer in, and that's not what the Board, where the Board of Commissioners is interested, I'm just saying, beyond the AKB project, in that case, I think as a board, we can look at you and say, well, really, that's not where we're working now. Or vice versa. And I think what has not happened in the past is that when we start looking at our development and the impacts on the community, we have left the Water Authority and the potential for sewer away from the table. So, I mean, I'm hoping a partnership will mean that as we move forward, because this says that they're only going to be moving based on what our future land use map is.
Well, it helps that we have two commissioners that sit on, I mean, you know, I mean, if I think you're sitting on it.
You know, when you start putting words on paper.
But this document is based solely on that idea of a partnership, where you work in consensus with one another, and collaboratively, as opposed to y'all making decisions without thinking about the impacts on the water and sewer authority.
Yes, and that can happen.
That's happened.
All right.
Even though y'all, but it's happened even though we've got two sitting on the board? I'm just saying.
No, there's been some history with the Water Authority.
I'm not talking about just the two of y'all, I mean.
No, no. We're speaking of past tense, that happened already before this administration.
I'm thinking.
And there's typically just one commissioner that sits on that board, that's the ninth member.
So you got double duty.
Okay, and my other one is, when I read through this, paragraph two, and this just caught me, it's one of those words that I, it says, the Water Authority controls.
No, you're.
That's been changed.
No, you're looking.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we revise it to the, Water Authority is the sole.
That's what I had.
We're the sole water and sewer provider. And the only reason why this language exists is because county ordinance, you can be in the water and sewer business. So, we don't want to compete.
And we don't want to compete.
Exactly.
I don't think we want to get in that competition. All right. Any other, now this is just first.
It did say control. It was discussed at the last committee meeting, and what you're looking at now is the revision coming from that.
He's actually looking at the prior draft, so.
Okay, sorry, that's just, all right. So, those are my two issues. You fixed one of them right off. I'm pretty well in trying to gain to be a partner with you all. My first paragraph eight kind of read to me to say, hey, you all can't go and get, do stuff for the jail unless we say so. And that was not going to be okay with me. The rest of it is, I mean, I'm looking at you two specifically to say, you understand what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
We do. Number eight was actually changed at the last meeting as well.
That's correct.
It's a redline version. Number eight was changed, because I had some challenges with it, and the team worked through and cleaned all of that up at the end of the meeting.
And we added that first sentence as well, to just reiterate that whole partnership idea. I said bold and underlined, kind of as a joke, but Joseph did it.
No, I think it was valid.
I do want to point out, though, on paragraph two, even with the provide language replacing control, we do have two other sewer providers in the county already.
Which are exempted, relinquished, or released by the Water Authority already, so.
We're talking about community services.
And City of Griffin.
Henry County.
City of Griffin.
Well.
Okay.
I'm talking about in the unincorporated section, you've got Henry County, and the little blob.
And some of, City of Griffin is actually non-incorporated.
Yeah, some of the city, that's true, that's true, Joseph. Because the sewer boundary goes beyond their city limits on.
That's correct.
I'm excited about this document, so everybody knows, to be able to, just because Gwen and I sit on it, and we work it almost every day, that the other three of you understand why we're trying to come together. The Water Authority has moved light years in the last three or four years, and now it's a different organization than it was, and I want to make sure everybody is sitting there, looking at it, and trying to work together. So, and this is just first draft, as I understand it, of us trying to do that and educating us. We're going to vote on something tonight, but it has nothing to do with this at all. Okay? We all square with this? Any other questions?
No, I just, we just thought we got any irritating language out of this before, and so, since nobody really has anything extra. No, I'm good.
I thank Gwen and Steve for sitting, Stephanie.
And Mr. Bolden.
Sitting on the committee, and to make these words come out, and save us all a lot of work and effort. All right.
And if there are additional things that y'all want, if you would please, before the next Water Authority meeting, let Joseph or Charlie know what those are, so that we just don't want this to just.
Languish.
Not come back up ever again.
And if Joseph, are you able to just kind of share with us where this whole thing, the jumpstart is, where we are now in terms of the sewer expansion project?
Absolutely. So, our contract team, that we got on board, we onboarded in May. We have submitted all the state documents. We are waiting for our MPDS permit. We have closed on the wastewater plant site, and we have a guaranteed maximum price that was obtained on October 1st. It's a pretty large number. We're working through trying to do some value engineering to get that number down. We're actually going to present it to our planning and finance committees on Wednesday. But I'm excited, the sewer system, we're designing it for a, the gravity trunk main is going to have a fifty-plus year useful life. Our lift station is sized to take us well into the future, and our wastewater facility is going to be designed for a hundred thousand gallons a day, day one. So, the reason why we're using a small number is because, at this point, we are talking about a sewer system with zero customers. Well, that is going to pose a problem if we come to start up the plant and we don't have any sewer to receive. So we had to, we had a great design team. After kicking it around, we've actually taken a small footprint, created a lot of redundancy, and we're going to be able to, as long as we can get twelve thousand gallons a day, we will be able to start this plant. That is pretty impressive. So, we, our design team has met every goal that we've put in front of them, and I think we're going to be ready to have a conversation with the Board of Commissioners, I would say, either by the end of this month or early next month, to actually show you the plan. And to bring you up to speed on what we're doing, what we're designing. It's exciting times.
The issue that some of us have about residential stuff.
Residential on that, yeah.
That's a big issue, that partnership, we work with them on size, capacity, to be able to do it. We talk to them, and if we put in huge, big pipes, we can turn around and do residential. We put in smaller pipes, we're not going to be able to do residential. So we can talk with them and control kind of what we're trying to do out there, I believe. That, at least from my perspective, that's what I see it as. So the talking back and forth of how we want to do this is pretty important to us in the long run. All right. Anything else from, Joseph, from you? Stephanie? Newton?
No, I would just point out, there's no allowance for apartment dwellings on AKB.
Yes, yes. That's the backside. Okay, all right, thank you, we appreciate it. Thanks, sir, everybody works on that team, too.
Thank you.
Item number three. Review the RFP for appointment of two architectural firms in support of Spalding County. The Board of Commissioners asks the county managers to solicit bids for contracting services for the county. The presentation by staff this afternoon is in response to the RFP for Architectural Services. Dr. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you remember, the board has directed staff to RFP to bid out the professional services for everything that the county does. We did just that, and received three responses, one from LDD Blue Line, one from CPL Architectural Engineering, and one from Praxis Three. We, as a staff, Erica, TJ, and I had the opportunity to interview two of the three that are listed before you. We had one that did not come for an interview. We had one that did not come for an interview. LDD Blue Line and CPL are both doing work for the county right now. LDD Blue Line did the architectural work for the Aquatic Center, and CPL is doing the master plan for the Parks and Recreation. And they have done a good job. And staff's recommendation this afternoon is going to be to move forward with the appointment of both LDD Blue Line and with CPL, because the RFP indicated that we would choose two of the architectural firms, as was your direction. TJ's here, Erica's here, will be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have as a result of the information that we provided.
Any more projects as they've done, outside of what Steve mentioned here? Any more local projects?
Actually, yes, they've done quite a bit of additional projects, and I will be more than happy to share the, all of the project work that was completed by them during the break, if you would like. Do you have additional information for the projects they provided?
LDD Blue Line provided architectural work for the Aquatic Center, and has also been a partner with Paragon Engineering for several years. CPL is currently doing our master plan, but they have a very large, extensive architectural program that is on the entire Eastern Seaboard, with extensive Parks and Rec and government work here in Georgia.
I'll have to admit, I reviewed both of the two and was pretty impressed with the quality and quantity of work that they've done around the state. They've done lots of stuff all around with lots and lots of counties and cities.
Yeah, they were both very large.
I know that on some projects, like federal, where federal money, or maybe even DCA, is involved, that there's a process for bidding. Now, for us, hiring, I mean, appointing two firms means that we don't have to go through the process of putting out a bid and blah, 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 blah. We can just kind of get to the work, which I think is wonderful. Will that be a problem for us if there is federal money in that process?
Great question. The short answer to that is no, because we have properly bid for the architectural and the civil engineering firms, and we can show all of the bid material to include listing the firm on Georgia Registry and putting it in the proper notifications. We had this issue last year for some IT work that was to be done over at the courthouse. And one of the judges made the decision to move forward with what was our provider. But it had been, they had not gone through the process of bidding the work for being listed as a master service agreement contractor with the county. So, we were not allowed to ask for reimbursement of those funds. This process that we have just completed does afford us the opportunity to move forward with asking for reimbursement, because we have properly advertised and selected under an MSA agreement with the firms.
I just think this is a good move. It'll cut out a lot of wait time between that we have to wait two weeks to get the RFP together, and then you got to post it, and then you got to wait some more weeks, and, yeah.
This will speed up our process.
Good move.
All right, we're going to vote on that tonight.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So if there's any questions you can look through, I gave my copy to Rita, and she'll just look at it, pass it on around, if you want to look at it. I think it's a very good thing that the county manager has done. All right, item number four, SPOLOST, T-SPOLOST, FLOST, HB 581. This is the initial discussion, calling for a referendum in 2025. We are within two years of the T-SPOLOST coming to an end. I believe this program is a huge success. We've completed nearly 70 miles of resurfacing for our roads, and we are on track to deliver 100 miles that we plan to complete. That said, we should consider asking our community to continue this work, or consider other SPOLOST projects in support of our community. As a caveat, I think we should consider the impact of House Bill 581 will have on our community through the floating local option sales tax, FLOST. I'd like to hear from the board, as well, as we will need to direct the staff to move forward with a referendum in January of '25. All right, let's get Dr. Ledbetter to explain what we can do, which ones we can do, which ones we can't do, and all of that.
So, I have had the opportunity to look through the ACCG's documentation for what is possible. With House Bill 581 and all the indications from ACCG is that that will pass as we move forward, so that will, that will move us to eight cents on the dollar for our sales tax, our local sales tax, which is the maximum amount for the sales tax. So, we have a choice. If our, if our neighbors make the decision through referendum to add the penny for the floating local option sales tax, then we are afforded just that one cent, that, one cent that is currently being used for T-SPOLOST. That is the only thing that that one penny is being used for right now. We exchanged it three years ago from a SPOLOST to transportation local option sales tax. We can do one or the other, we can't do both anymore, because FLOST will carry that one cent should our community decide to adopt that one cent floating local option sales tax penny. So, what is the desire of the board? Do you want to continue with transportation special local option sales tax, or do you want to go back to a SPOLOST, where we could do something with sewer? We could also put roads in, or we could do some of the other items of debt reduction for things like the trucks that we just bought for the fire department. How does the board want to proceed? Because we're going to need, staff is going to need to know your direction very quickly in order to prepare us for a referendum come next November.
Okay, I can just speak, because I know I'm not going to maybe be around next year, but I would like to do as much as I can for the economic development, which means that anything, you know, I feel if we could do, put toward water, sewer, and also even the Development Authority, I don't know if we can. I just think that's important, if we lay that groundwork down for future projects, I think that's something I'd like to see done. On top of, yes, we need to have some public safety items on there, too, to balance these out, as well as maybe a project, a recreational project. Not as many as we did last time, but to kind of as well round this thing as much as possible, if we can.
Now, remember, the transportation local option sales tax, that T-SPOLOST that we voted in, we will, if all goes as planned, right now, we will complete 100 miles of resurfaced roads. We have 470 miles of resurfaced roads in the county, so we will have completed 25% in five years. It takes a lot of money to resurface roads.
And if we stop and do economic development, and I just want to make sure, this is one or the other, if I understand it.
That's correct.
If we stop and say we're going to do SPOLOST.
That we don't do SPOLOST.
I.e. economic development, public safety, things like that, we're not going to do T-SPOLOST. The citizens that I'm talking to, very excited about what's going on with T-SPOLOST. And when I talked to them, I said, hey, they said, T-SPOLOST is good by me.
When you think of T-SPOLOST, though, and you have to get the way they think of it, though. They're looking at their roads, and I totally understand it. We look at economic development, things like that, we're looking at jobs, we're looking at all kinds of other things that factor into this county, property taxes and things like that, that's going to drive revenue. But who knows, we may be able to put some money aside for roads, I mean, at the end of the day. So, I hear, I get what the citizen is saying, but I'm talking about long-term here.
Yes, because with SPOLOST, you could actually split, you could do half for projects and half for the roads.
Oh, you can do, okay.
Yes. And we have always had some part of roads in a SPOLOST. Remember, before T-SPOLOST, that's the only way we got our roads done, was because of SPOLOST. We put some money in there to be able to, so we can put, but we won't be able to put in as many miles.
Yeah, you would be able to resurface 23 to 24 miles.
I think we need to maximize the SPOLOST as much as we can, with a variation of things.
I think, I think that we're forgetting that ultimately, it's going to be up to the voters. Like, if you put a bunch of wants on a SPOLOST, it's not going to pass. You know, a T-SPOLOST, I think, will pass, I think a second T-SPOLOST will certainly pass, right now. Look at how well this one has gone, we, you know.
Learned a lot of lessons doing this one.
Underpromised and overdelivered, and we've stayed in budget, and it's, you know, like, and I think that has gone a long way with the voters, and they, whereas there's still plenty of roads to do. I think that if we put four and another T-SPOLOST, look, I'm an economic developer at heart, I love economic development, I, my favorite board is the Development Authority, like, I, but at the same time, we're not going to get economic development unless we have roads. So, I still think we should do those other things, and I like the idea of floating a SPOLOST that includes a bunch of roads, but other than cancellation of debt, which, you can't do with a T-SPOLOST?
No, he did, he had a T-SPOLOST.
Yeah, you can, but once your projects are complete, yes, you can roll it to do that.
Other than that, there's, I mean, there's plenty of wants, but like, there's, there's no, we have, we have needs that are on a order of magnitude larger than SPOLOST. We have, you know, and so, if you continue to put roads in there and pay off what debt we've accrued with like vehicles and stuff, we're not going to get close to a new jail. We're not going to get close to a new courthouse. We're not, I mean, like, not close. And so, that said, building a new facility, or building a new place, or a new whatever, comes with M&amp;O, which gets us further away from courthouses and jails, and the things that we need. Again, not to bash pickleball, not to bash parks, not to bash aquatic centers, but they're expensive, and they're nice to have, but we don't need them. You know what I mean? We have to have a jail, we have to have a courthouse, we have to have cop cars.
And we have to have economic development. I'm not, I'm not talking about recreation necessarily, we learned from that one.
No, I'm with you there, I'm with you there.
But not to cut you off, I just want to make sure I make my point here.
You have to plan for the future, but like, nobody dies if we don't have a pickleball court.
No, you're right about that.
You know what I'm saying? But the, I mean, if y'all haven't personally gone in and seen our jail this year, you know, oh, I saw it five years ago, go and take a look. Our sheriff's working miracles with it, but every day that they continue, it's miracle after miracle. There, it is only a matter of time until we need a completely new jail. Innovations are not going to cut it, and that's going to be an order of magnitude larger than anything we've ever done. And we're, and here we are going, oh, we could have more trails. Hey, that'd be great, I would love more trails. Like, I mean, I drive my golf cart around town, I would love more trails. But like, we need a jail first, we need a jail first. We, and, but we have to keep working on our roads. We, you know, we have to.
All right, let's just continue. This is the opening conversation of us talking about this, because in the end, as James says, we're going to get a referendum to go, one way or the other. Either we're going to do T-SPOLOST, or we're going to do SPOLOST, and we're going to put projects on it. So, we're going to have to come to grips with it and say, hey, this is what, where we're voting for. All right, Gwen?
I, you know, I can't speak for leisure services, but, I mean, I think that we're good on parks and stuff right now. I think we need to perfect what it is that we have. So, I wouldn't envision recreation asking for anything else. But my concern is that we have done a really good job on the transportation SPOLOST. I would hate to see that momentum stop. The problem is, is that that's all you can do. Now, for us, is that a problem? Because clearly, we need sidewalks, clearly, we need some bridges fixed, clearly, we need curb and gutter on so many roads that we have. So, my question would be then, because this last T-SPOLOST, the vote was only about being able to resurface roads. So, if we're able to delineate from that in terms of transportation and look at other areas that didn't get touched in the 100 miles that were proximal, then, I mean, I say the T-SPOLOST worked, I think people see the evidence of it, they wouldn't have a problem supporting another one. But even if you did a T-SPOLOST and a regular SPOLOST together, it would not be enough money for a jail. And I'll be the one to sit here and say that when that time comes, because it is coming, Daryl has drug this probably as long as he can and put as many Band-Aids on it, but it's coming. And, and we will probably be in the same position that we were, again, we will have to go into debt, we will probably have to increase the milage rate again in order to pay for a jail, because, and then to pay for somebody to babysit our inmates until they get it built, because they will not be able to stay in that spot. So, yeah, I, you know, and I understand about the floating tax, I don't know how much the residents approve that, and of course, unless we come to them with a referendum for floating tax, that's how they'll, they'll know about it. And I can't see many people not being okay if that money is only for reduction in taxes. So, we, the hard decision is, we maybe have a list this long, but we really need to fit, we haven't strategically figured out how the jail's going to happen. And, and it, you know, saying, let's just do a SPOLOST, that's going to get you like six rooms and some parking spaces. So, I think we can't mix those up, they're not going to be able to do the same thing, the stuff that we need to do. And I think so, from that point, there needs to be some serious workshopping with us about what we're going to do to get the money, and if it is going to require, I would much rather us do what we need to do, and I know, you know, you guys, if we have to raise the milage rate to build a jail, I would rather make it on our terms instead of on the federal government's term of making us move with the quickness. So, I know that didn't answer your question you asked me, but I.
That's, no, us coming to grips and starting to have that conversation is why it's on here. All right? Vice Chair?
Yeah, I totally agree with both Dutton and Ms. Gwen on the importance of the jail. I mean, it is going to be a great expense, and even greater expense if we don't get it fixed, because it's going to be a lot happening out there. Second thing is, if we have any kind of SPOLOST with anything other than roads on it, it will never be passed again. I mean, the Aquatic Center left such a bad taste in people's mouths. If it ain't for roads, I just don't ever see it passing again.
Yep. Okay, all right. Everybody's got to come to grips, and I think the big issue is, what are we going to do about the jail and the courthouse? We can kick that can down the road, but sooner or later, big debts are going to come in on that.
What's your feeling on it? What's your feeling on this? The roads, that's what you're saying, that's what you, 100% roads?
My answer is roads right now, but we've got to figure out, and I'll give up on, everybody knows that roads is my number one thing to do, but I would give up on it if we have some kind of a plan on how we're going to do it. I just don't see the plan that we can do it right now. If we get, if we stop doing the roads, we've done 25% of the roads in the county, and the other 75% just continue to get worse and worse and worse. If we don't do something with the jail, sooner or later, somebody's going to come in.
But the jail, okay, I understand, but the jail cannot be part of SPOLOST, right? We can't, why do we keep bringing, we know that the jail needs.
It could.
It can be.
Yeah, you can SPOLOST the jail.
We could SPOLOST.
You wouldn't be able to pay for the entire jail. You get a chunk of it, and you still have to bond, and you still have to, you know what I'm saying, like, but you could take a chunk out of it. I mean, it's going to be a new jail.
Jail's how much money, order of magnitude, 60 million?
Just for the jail, yes, and that was 18 months ago, so.
And a five-year SPOLOST?
Is, if we did Tier One, it would be roughly $64 million.
So, we could do jail for five years, five or six years, nothing but jail, and it would sit there as we.
But that's not going to pass, everybody knows it's not going to pass.
Either bond it, or as we wait and capture all the money, then go ahead and start building and paying.
It wouldn't be supported by the municipalities, because they wouldn't be getting any part of it, so.
We'd have to do it as a Tier One, and they wouldn't.
And they would not sign off on it.
They wouldn't sign off on it.
The city would not like that, spending all the money there as opposed to the cities, as opposed to the roads. So, this is first initial conversation publicly on us talking about it, it is a hard thing. And if you remember, in T-SPOLOST, we bought Big Blue 2, whatever we're calling, we did some sidewalks that we're putting in and stuff like that, so there were some, a few other things in there, but for the most part, it was due 100 miles of roads.
Yep.
Okay.
I just think we're missing out on an opportunity, that's just me speaking over here, I just got to say it. I just got to say it. I think we're missing out on an opportunity if we don't include any type of economic development for our future. We're setting the stage for the future. You know, roads are great, don't get me wrong. We need to have nice roads, but you have to have industries here also, to drive people here to work, to do things, to grow positively. So, you just, I, you have to think about that. That's just, that's my last two cents.
So, maybe, maybe a, a SPOLOST that will, instead of doing 100 miles, will do 50 miles. And that'll probably be, put, put us at around.
25 million.
25 or 30. And I mean, I, I, I don't even know. I don't even know. I mean, you say, here, Sheriff, he may as well bury it in the ground, because it's just barely going to get some dirt moved. So, and if we were, we, if we were to do that, we would still, I think people will still recognize that the five miles that we were resurfacing is a whole lot less than the 20 miles a year that we're doing. I mean, I think that's a possibility, but I, I mean, the two things that we really need to have a SPOLOST for, we don't have the economy to net what we need to do without putting ourselves, you know, 50,000, I mean, 50 million or so in debt, even if we were able to collect a full 64. I, I'm just saying, I don't know how many people would vote for this, but you know, I would expect certain people would not vote for it.
Best people aren't going to vote for anything.
Yeah. So, so, but I, but I'm just saying, let's, let's, let's not, let's not wait. Let's get a game plan. If it's, if it's construction that can be phased or whatever, but we need to know some real dollar amounts before we make a decision on this. Because getting, having the opportunity to get only roads done is not going to mean anything to us when, two months after they're done, they come in and say their jail is closed.
And, and there's a whole bunch of staff work that's going to have to be done, because if we say we want a new jail, are we tearing the old jail down, building it there? Are we building it somewhere else? If we tear it down there, then where are we going to put our, the people that are in it?
You got to pay.
And, and I understand a long time ago that that was a million dollars a month.
There's already.
To be able to put them somewhere around the camp. So, this.
180,000 a day.
How much?
180 a day.
So, we've got a lot of work to do to say, is it still going to be out there? Are we got some other land that we want to put it on to?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a whole bunch of work besides the decision.
I, I, I do want to point out yet again, though, sorry to be the criminal defense lawyer in the room, but the overwhelming majority of our prisoners currently have bonds that are too high for them to pay. And bonds are supposed to be set not based on the crime, but the person's ability to, to pay. And it's, they're, they're only there to ensure that the person's going to come back to, to court. That, that's it. And the economic differences between Fayette County and Spalding County are stark. And some of the bonds that we see set in court are unattainable for, for me. I couldn't put my house up. And you go, wait a minute. And then you go to Pike County, and you see the same things, and you go to, but then you go to Lamar County, and you don't. And you go to Butts County, and you don't. And you go to Monroe County, and you don't. And I, I think it would go a long way to saving us a ton of money if we were able to split the circuit away from Fayette County. The, the economic realities are so stark that the difference in opinions of judges would more reflect the economic realities of Spalding County. And I think, I think we could drastically decrease the number of, of our inmates. Drastically, drastically.
I hate to say this, but that's over my head. I have to think through that. I don't understand all of that.
81% of people in our jail around have, have bonds that they, that if everyone on their block put together, they couldn't reach.
No, I'm talking about.
Which means they don't have a bond.
Pulling us away from the district, you know.
What does that mean on judicial?
Circuit business. Okay. All right. The SPOLOST, deciding on SPOLOST, eight cents, all of that stuff, it's going to be a big issue for us. And we've got to get the staff and the citizens thinking in the direction we want them to go, and them understanding why we want to do what we want to do. So.
Is, could you ask our, and I forgot his name again, our grants, new grant, Sky?
Larry Wallace.
To look, look, see if he can look up some juvenile, juvenile justice grants for, I don't know, jail infrastructure?
Let's write it down.
Okay. Okay.
Just.
And I know that they're working grants all the time. I'm signing grants for Sheriff all the time. They're trying to do stuff. Okay. Anything else on, on that?
No.
All right. Any, any last minute things?
Oh, oh, yeah, actually, there is one more thing. Dr. Ledbetter, could you, could you give us estimates on bond payments? Like, if we took out a $60 million bond to build a new jail, like, how much would that cost us a year in, in repayment? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Because if that number is matched by how much we would save by having a quarter of the deputies watch, you know what I'm saying? Like, right now, we have two deputies for 90 people, which means one deputy watches 45. In Clayton County, the number's closer to 300 per deputy. So, I mean, it's like stark, and they're significantly safer, so you have, you know what I mean? How much are we, extra are we paying to, man, it's an upkeep that we wouldn't be paying if we had, you know what I'm saying? We might could get those numbers pretty close, and if so, anyway. But I don't, I don't have any concept of what it would cost us for.
We will run, we will ask Jeremy James to run the numbers for us. We've already reached out, let them know that we were going to have this discussion this evening, and ask them if they could spare some time for us to, to call on them for some support.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Do I have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So, it's motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five, zero. We're adjourned.